Recording in progress.
Good evening, and welcome to the special meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is August 24, 2023 is now 6:00 PM. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public view and in participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic media meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 882-7570-8725. Comments will also be accepted via email at citypublic, citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. This meeting is now hereby called to order, excuse me. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protemejia is absent. Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas.
I'm here.
Thank you, and would you all please rise for the invocation led by Councilwoman Anita Evans?
Psalms 27 says, "The Lord is my light and my salvation. Whom shall I fear? The Lord is the strength of my life; of whom shall I be afraid?" I ask Father God to just continue to watch over us and keep us, Lord, giving you all the honor, the glory, and the praise. We thank you for bringing each one of us here today. We ask that you lift each and every one of us up, Father, giving us the leadership and the guidance that you would have us to do. Continue to watch over our families and our friends. Protect this city, Father God. Protect each of one of us, the staff, the police department, the fire department, the council. Father, we love you and we thank you, and we ask these blessings, Father, in your son's precious name. Christ Jesus, amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance, ready to salute. We move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask my colleagues if they have any changes or additions to the agenda. I will ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilwoman Anita Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes. We move on to public comment. Members of the public shall have an opportunity to address the city council regarding matters on this agenda at the time the agenda item is called. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Anyone on Zoom or on emails?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I could close public comment, move on to consent calendar. We have item A1 appropriations limit, again, limit for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Lima.
Mayor, if I may, this is a consent item?
Yeah.
Okay. Are the members of the public wishing to speak on the consent calendar? Any Zoom or written form?
We have none, Mayor.
All right, excuse me for that, I'm a little off my game today. And I will bring to my colleagues for discussion and a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I wanted to see if I could pull the item to a quick clarification, if I may, just an explanation on the GAN limit, please.
Good evening, Council. Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services. The GAN limit is an item that was voted on by the voters back, I believe, around 1980 in the wake of Prop 13. Prop 13 was passed in 1978, and this was almost like a companion item to it. And what it basically is, is that it sets a limit as to how much the government can spend. So an appropriation limit that is, that the government can spend in any particular given fiscal year. It's based off of the taxes, the tax income that comes in. And every year it has increased, the amount has increased by a couple of different factors. What we're using is the percentage growth in the population as well as the statewide CPI. You can multiply the two together from the previous level and you get the new level. Madera, like many other municipalities, is way under the limit that is calculated for the GAN limit for this organization.
Thank you, Mr. Lima. And if I may, the amount of $57,000 is the carryover adding the new adjustments or the new appropriations that are made, correct? Because there was a $54 million plus whatever appropriated this year, the adjustment that makes it 57. So if I understand it correctly, it's only based on taxes, right, collected? You cannot spend more than $57,000, and we're underneath that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so our tax income that we had calculated is about $27 million. We could, if we had $57 million of taxes, that's the max we could spend.
For that fiscal year.
For that fiscal year. But because we have 27, we have a buffer. And so we are well under the GAN limit. We will have no issues with the GAN limit as proposed today.
Perfect. Now, I did want to just add one point of clarification there. Looking at the Californias, the way they factor that and what you had in your staff report, I don't know if I saw two different numbers there. One showed a 4.38%, and the other one was showing a 4.07%. And I'm not sure if that was adjusted or not, but on the staff report it did show that. I just wanted to confirm that that was the case.
Yes, that is the case.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Lima.
No problem.
Entertaining motion, Mr. Rodriguez.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilwoman Gallegos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, the ayes have it. Thank you very much for that explanation. We will now move to item B, Public Hearings. Item B1 is a public hearing and consideration of a resolution adopting the City of Madera Budget and Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, again. Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services. It is my very distinct pleasure to bring to you the proposed budget for this public hearing. The budget is proposed for the fiscal year July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024. Parts of this presentation are going to be somewhat familiar to you. It's very similar to what I presented last week during the regular council session, but we are going to go into a little more detail tonight on this presentation. So with that, I will begin. So the, we're going to start off with an overview of the budget. We're going to review some key additions to this budget from previous fiscal years or when compared to previous fiscal years. Then we'll open it up to council discussion questions and action on this proposed budget. The total proposed budget for the city of Madera for fiscal year 23, 24 is $196.4 million. The proposed appropriations are 80.8 million or 16, almost 70% higher than the previous fiscal year. The key reason is a change in the presentation of capital budgets. We are now including previous funds that are rolled over or funds from previous years that are rolled over on capital projects. They are now included in the budget, and that's what drove the overall increase. Oops, too far. There. Our fiscal year 23, 24 proposed revenue is 202 million. This is 86.1 million or 70, almost about 74% higher than the fiscal year 22, 23 adopted revenue. As is the case of appropriations, the principal reason for the increase is the change in the presentation of capital budgets. What you have in front of you now, or what you're seeing, is the citywide revenue by category. Again, 202 million is the amount for this fiscal year or proposed for this fiscal year. The largest single source of revenue for the city is taxes. $46 million or about 20% of your income comes in through taxes. I will also note the federal grants, 35.8 million. About 16 and a half million of that is ARPA money. So federal grants are playing a huge role in the budget this year. I also want to point out our charges for services are 39.1 million. These would be like utility fees, they would be permits and items like that. So that plays a very significant role in the overall budget as well. What you have in front of you now is citywide expenditures by category. The single largest category this year is capital outlay. As mentioned before, we are looking at a $78.5 million capital outlay budget. This corresponds very closely to the $77 million capital CIP number that was presented to you by engineering a few weeks ago. Outside of capital, the largest single expenditure salaries and benefits, $36.6 million that we are proposing for expenditure in FY 23, 24. The next two slides show expenditures by department. And again, this is citywide, and these are in millions. Engineering is, you see a rather substantial increase from previous year's budget. The previous year's budget was 13.9 million. That's column two on your screen. Column four, going from left to right. Column four, you'll see it says 33.6 million, so almost a $20 million increase. Again, that is all capital that is driving that overall increase. This next slide is the rest of the departments, and it shows the single largest departmental budget in the city proposed for this coming year, and that would be Public Works. That's $75.4 million. Again, the FY 22, 23 budget was 36.7, so you're looking at almost a $40 million increase in that budget, again, almost entirely made up of capital. Yeah, yes. Okay, let's look at the general fund specifically. Proposed general fund appropriations are $42.9 million. That is up only $400,000 or 0.9% from general fund adopted appropriations in fiscal year 22, 23. This increase is small because we moved 3.1 million of grant appropriations out of the general fund and into their own special revenue funds. And later in the presentation, I'll actually show you where that happens, where you can actually see it. General fund proposed revenue is 43.2 million, which is about 1.3 million or 3.3% higher than the 22, 23 adopted budget. Two items are driving that growth. We have growth in interest. You might remember from your meeting last week, I talked about how with interest rates higher, we are earning more on our money that we have invested. And so that is coming through into the general fund, and we're able to generate additional revenue from our interest earnings. We're also projecting sales tax will be up about 0.7 million or $700,000, same thing. While that sounds like a lot, and it is, it's the slowest rate of growth in the last four years. So it's not growing very fast. But it is, because it plays a significant part in our budget, even a small growth generates this kind of dollars. These are general fund revenues by, over the last couple of years, and then with the proposed amount. As you can see, taxes are the single largest source of revenue for the general fund. In fact, it makes up 63% of the general fund revenue is, comes from taxes. All the others, as you see, are in single digits compared to what our tax revenue is. So as tax revenue goes, that's how our city finances go. Salaries and benefits in the general, these are general fund expenditures by category. The largest single expense in the general fund is salaries and benefits, 24.3 million or just a little over 50%, about 55% of the general fund is in salaries and benefits, is in salaries and benefits. Materials and services, this would be for utility bills, O and M expenses, anything else we might incur in that area. There are the next largest category at $12.8 million that's being proposed. General fund expenditure by department. So you see a very small increase, but again, comparing column two, going from left to right. Column two has a total of 42.5 million. Column four, 42.9. The largest single department in the general fund is police with a budget of 16.7 million. Again, I want to get back to the very small increase. We moved 3.1 million out of primarily parks in grant expenses. And you probably will notice the Parks budget is 8.9 million, or was 8.9 million the previous fiscal year, is proposed to be 6.2. So it looks like from a general fund side, it's taking a $2.7 million cut. But in reality, when you go back here to the, this is citywide expenses. Again, look at column two for Parks. You see a budget of 9.7 and proposed 10.6. That's where you see that money going out of the general fund and into special revenue funds. So as a department, Parks' budget is growing, but as a general fund contribution, it is being reduced. Okay, let's talk about some of the additions to this budget. We'll start with personnel. We have several positions being added in the Public Works Department. We start off with in administration with, we are reclassifying a purchasing assistant, proposing to reclassify purchasing assistant to office assistant two. In wastewater, we are proposing to reclassify an operator one to a plant mechanic. We are also proposing to add an operator in training at wastewater. For the water, we are proposing to add part-time hours, about 2,000 hours of maintenance worker one, and a similar amount of hours being added in the sewer, in the sewer fund as well. Again, part-time maintenance workers. The big addition this year is a full-time safe and clean team. This would be responsible for cleaning throughout the city, but mainly the river, yes. The river. The part-time staff has been successful, but it is a full-time job, we feel. After having spent a year of working with it, we believe it is a full-time job, and we are recommending converting those part-time positions to full-time in this budget. In Parks, we are looking to add a couple of positions, or I should say convert to some positions. We are proposing to reclassify a Parks manager position to a Parks project manager. What is that, what does that mean? What that means is a, the position, Parks has a lot of capital coming up. And what we have found, or in our discussions with the Parks director, is that they really need someone who is responsible for making sure that those projects are meeting their critical timelines. You know, are you paving the concrete the day that you said you would? You know? That is, so we are proposing to reclassify this position and to have this position basically oversee the capital program at the Parks Department. We are also proposing to convert a part-time administrative analyst to a full-time administrative analyst. And then we recently, or we've been involved in discussions with Madera Unified to provide some after-school programs. We are proposing to add about 12,400 hours of program lead, program leader one time. These would be part-time positions that would assist in the after-school program with, in conjunction with Madera Unified. And then lastly, in community development, we have a couple of positions in building. We are asking to add an administrative assistant, a full-time position, as well as 1,000 hours of part-time intern. And that's it. So that lists all the positions. So how much is this proposed to add to the budget? In the general fund, we are looking that the proposed additions would add about $197,600 of cost. In sewer, it'd be about 105,000. Water, 40,000. Facilities, just a very tiny, about $150. And in Parks would be the biggest one, it'd be $219,000 of additional cost. I believe, well, I shouldn't say that. I don't know for certain. I'll let the Parks director answer that if it comes up about that program. I want to talk a little bit about the safe and clean team. The FY 22, 23 budget provided for a pilot safe and clean team. There was $70,000 budgeted for illegal dumping and homeless encampment cleanup. That, the need exceeded that appropriation, and thus the city retained a private contractor for assistance in addition to the city staff that we have working on it. Work toward a long-term agreement for the maintenance of the Fresno River and the ever-growing need to address homeless encampments. This budget provides for three permanent positions dedicated to such efforts. Also, we are going to be proposing the purchase of some additional equipment, which I will show you in a little bit. One thing that was a focus of this budget was to address some deferred maintenance and needs. You know, it's, this is a common issue with government. It's real easy to open a building. It's not as sexy to maintain it. And so, so what we are proposing is that we actually address some of these maintenance issues that have been outstanding for some time. In fleet, we are proposing the purchase of 11 shop roll-up doors. This would be 165,000. We would replace all the doors at fleet, all the roll-up doors, I should say, at fleet. We're also proposing to finish coating the shop floor with epoxy, that's $55,000. For Information Services Department, we are proposing to purchase 16 servers for either replacement of existing ones or to add capacity as we grow our network. That's $400,000. We are also proposing a technology upgrade here in council chambers, new cameras as well as monitors for the DIES. That's going to be $15,000. Human resources, we are looking to purchase a recruitment and onboarding software. This would allow us to, I guess, more standardize our recruitment efforts and our applications and receiving them. And so we are looking to, we're looking to get approval on appropriation of $22,000 for that item. In public works, we are proposing to replace the airport terminal roof. That is $80,000. And then we are also looking at the rehabilitation of the roof at the corporation yard. This would not be a full tear down. This would just be basically patching areas, but it's going to cost $100,000 because it's a big facility. And finally, at Parks, we are looking to replace the doors at the Pan Am Center. That's going to be $15,000. All these are included in this proposed budget. In addition to those capital improvements, we are also looking to buy several pieces of equipment. We have a few, four items for, actually, we have six items for police. We have detective vehicle, which is a replacement, a replacement for the chief's vehicle, or a replacement pickup for code enforcement, and then three new patrol vehicles as well. The three patrol vehicles will cost $240,000. With fire, we are looking to purchase a skid steer, and that would be part of the cleanup efforts that are going on with the safe and clean team. And I'll show you a picture of the skid steer in a little bit. With building, we are looking to replace a pickup. That would be $42,000. Public Works, we're looking to replace a, Public Works Streets, I should say, looking to replace a 10-yard dump truck. That's 225,000. Water, we've got two pickups for 84,000. Public Works Admin, a new director's pickup for $40,000. At wastewater, a flail mower replacement for 18,000. And sewer, a five-yard dump truck replacement at 190,000. The safe and clean team would also have a masticator we purchased. That's $25,000, and a boom mower at 75,000. Parks, we're proposing three purchases of equipment. We have a ball field groomer, which is new. That would be 41,000, a pothole trencher at 7,500, and a chip truck with boom for $225,000. Parks equipment would be paid through the general fund. Police is a combination of general fund and Measure K. The safe and clean team, the skid steer is Measure K through fire. The boom mower and masticator are general fund, and then Public Works are all enterprise funds that are being used to purchase their equipment. So this over here is the skid steer. Did I say that right? Yeah, I did. The masticator would be attached over here on this side, but that is the skid steer. And then here, oh, it is. Oh, well then, hey, okay. I've just been told that is the masticator. Okay, so the skid steer and the masticator would, are shown here. The boom mower is here on the other side. It's an arm that attaches to a tractor, and we already have the tractor. So it's just buying this other piece of equipment. This is the box truck with the boom. You've probably seen these around town with other companies. We're looking to get this, so when they do tree trimming, we have this available for staff to utilize. And finally, this is the ball field groomer that will pave the area between the bases and make them a lot smoother. It does it a lot faster than having to go out there and rake by hand and get them all up to ball field standards, so. Want to talk a little bit about the fire engine replacement program. In 2018, 19, the city created a fire engine replacement program. We originally initially contributed 200,000 for Measure K, but after the pandemic, the price of fire engines rose pretty dramatically. And so the city in the past year increased that contribution to 490,000. We are, in this budget, we are recommending that you continue to allocate 490,000 for this program. And we recently received our first fire engine purchased under this. And I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. This is the contributions that have been made. And as I mentioned, we did purchase a fire engine. It was about $750,000 for that unit. And I know that there has been some equipment that has been purchased on addition to that. I believe it's about another 150 to 200,000. So there, this money is being used. It's not just sitting in the bank. We have turned it into this, a fire engine. This is our new fire engine that will be put into service, as I understand it, pretty soon. I've been told. But this is the new fire engine that has, that has been purchased with Measure K. Staying on Measure K just for a bit, Measure K. Staying on measure K just for a bit, measure K, the projected revenues in this budget are 7.2 million dollars. They are split evenly between police and fire, counted for in different funds. For fire, it pays for the expenses of station 58, including the debt service on the station. For police, it pays for the salaries of some officers. And there's 919,000 in this budget to repave the parking lot or police headquarters parking lot. Several years ago, council directed that stabilization fund be set up for measure K. Currently, we, police and fire each have 780,000 in that stabilization fund. Consistent with previous years, we are recommending reserving 130,000 apiece or 260,000 total in order to grow those stabilization funds. The goal is to keep contributing until the reserve reaches an equivalent, about 30% of measure K expenses. And at the current rate, you've probably got about another two years to go before you'll get there. Also wanted to show you that, you know, I showed you earlier that police is the largest general fund department. But police gets a lot of other funding other than general fund. Measure K is probably the one that comes to mind most readily. But there's also a lot of others. We have community corrections partnership. We have schools. Madera Unified is paying for three officers. The housing authority is paying for a part of one full time officer. We have the justice assistance grant or JAG, which I believe council approved the application at the last meeting. The supplemental law enforcement services fund or SLESEF tobacco law enforcement grant. This is coming up in the last year of that grant, but we do have that funding coming in this year. The cops hiring grant, selective traffic enforcement program. BSCC Public Proposition 64 Grant, Prop 17, the Madera Fair and Radio Tower Rental Income. So when you add all these up, you're looking at now five, $6 billion of revenue that comes in that the police department is using to augment their, their appropriations. Several years ago, council directed that the city create an emergency stabilization fund for the general fund. And that the size of that would be at least 30% of general fund operating expenditures. So based on the appropriations that we are proposing in this budget, that stabilization fund will be 12.9 million dollars. That's an increase of 682,000 in comparison to FY 2223. This budget will fully fund that emergency stabilization fund. Wanted to talk a little bit about what's in this budget for parks and on the programming side of it. Parks has several items or several programs that are planned for the upcoming fiscal year. They have recreation programming for, for kids between kindergarten and 12th grade. So that offer a whole variety of activities in a safe environment. We have aquatic summer programming, which provides open swim opportunities, private lessons and rentals. Aging services program at two centers, which offers seniors with activities and classes. The rental facilities is open to the community. And then also special events such as movies in the park, tree planting events, cleanup and the pomegranate festival. All those are proposed for funding in this budget. The golf course. I want to touch on that just for a second. The last debt payment on the golf course will be made November of 2023, 164,000. So next year, that 164 will be freed up in the general fund. The, under the new agreement that was recently ratified by council, the base rent of $65,000 will be used to pay for the airport lease agreement. The golf course sits on airport land under FAA grant assurances. That land has to be rented. You cannot just use it. You have to pay the airport for it. And so as a result, they've been making a sick, about a $64,000, $64,000 annual payment as a rent. The base rent from the operator of the golf course is now sufficient to cover that airport lease payment. In addition, the city will contribute 25,000 toward capital projects. Revenues anticipated to come from green fees and other revenues at the golf course. And I will share with you that just yesterday, the operator made their $50,000 contribution toward this capital program. They did that yesterday. So. I want to touch on one other thing, utility costs. I know we, I brought up in previous workshops. But this just kind of gives you an idea of what utilities are doing. So in, in FY 2021, the city spent $2,980,000 on gas and electricity. In FY 2122, that jumped to 3,650,000. Now, we got kind of lucky this past year, 2223, it stayed flat. Actually, if I took it out a few more decimals, you'd find it went up about $5,000 is all it went up. But it's still almost $4 million that's going out for utility costs. In the FY 2324 budget, we are proposing 4 million, just a hair under, $4 million for utility costs. And this takes into account solar. So that, that just shows you what utility costs are doing to our operations. I touched on the golf course debt. You know, the city has other debt as well. In total, we will make 8.3 million dollars of principal and interest payments. That will leave us with, our outstanding debt at the end of June was 55.8 million. If I remember right, that's going to go down about $5 million. I'll check my math in a second because it's on a next, another slide. But I believe that's going to go down to about $50 million by the end of June of 24. But we are going to, we are planning to pay 8.3 million and that is fully budgeted in this budget. This gives you a, kind of a snapshot of our debt that is in the budget this year. We have the solar energy lease, which is about a million three. The police facilities loan, about 100,000. The fire stations, 300,000. Then we have a couple in water, grand total of about 500,000. Hey, I was right. And the sewer fund was one, is 1.6 million. And then we have the other miscellaneous funds and, and agency funds that we have. So grand total, about $5 million of principles can be paid this year. 8.3 million roughly of debt service will be paid in total. So our recommendation is that we were recommending approval of the FY 2324 proposed budget for, of 196.4 million dollars. Before I conclude, I just want to say that it has been a blast putting this budget together. I've had a good time doing it. But I couldn't do it without incredible folks working with me. I had the opportunity to thank the directors earlier today and I just want to share that again tonight, that the directors have been a huge help in putting this together. Also wanted to thank my staff, Anthony Forrest, Anthony Forrestier, Cleona Young, Brendan Mendes and Leanne Huang, who helped out tremendously on this. And then Joseph Corello, the, our communication specialist, who was the magician that put this book together. So I want to thank all of them publicly for all their efforts on this. So. And that concludes my presentation and we are ready for questions. Thank you very much. Excellent, Jeff.
Thank you. We will now open this site up to public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment under public comment? Seeing none, would we take any email or?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, okay. We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for comments. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Mr. Lima, thank you for that presentation. I know that every year when the financial director is tasked to bring this forward, it's, it's not an easy task. So thank you again and thank your staff. I did have a question regarding our general fund. You mentioned that there is a, an interest that's, that's earned and that was part of the, the adjustments that were made to that fund balance. Where is that interest coming from? Where are we generating that interest?
So the city, city has cash. And what we do with that cash beyond, what we look at is we say, okay, how much do we need to do day day operations? We have a cash in addition to that. And what we do is we invest it. And under state law, we can pretty much invest it in bonds. There's some little bit of exemption. There's some CDs, but generally bonds and specifically government bonds. So we bought treasury bonds, we've, US treasuries. We have some state of California. We have some private corporation bonds. The state law requires that they be five years or less in maturity. So they're relatively short term. But we invest in those and, you know, a couple of years ago, those bonds were paying half a percent or one. Now they're paying 5%. And what we've been doing is, as those other bonds have attrited, we've been taking a bond that earns half a percent and buying one that's paying five. And so what that has done is increased our earnings, our interest earnings that we are making on that excess cash. Just to put it in the context for the general fund, last year we had a, an amended amount of about 330,000 was the, in the, baked into the budget. This year, we're, we're saying we're going to get a million. So that's about $700,000 of new revenue being brought into the general fund. To put this in yield terms, about four months ago, we were earning 0.74% on our treasury pool. Last month, we earned 2.92. So we have increased by almost two, over 200 basis points in our treasury and it will go up again this month because we bought a little more. So, so that's where we're earning the money is from those kind of investments.
And would you say that all accounts can, like for example, you talked about that emergency fund balance that we have of 12 point some million, does that money get utilized for that as well? Can you use any of that money or is that money that can't be tied? Or, because you said it's a, no more than a five year treasury bond, municipal bonds or what have you. So is any of, any of those funds generating an interest?
Yes. Okay. So it's based on the average daily cash balance of any particular fund. And so as we earn money, we distribute it across all the funds in the city. Anyone that has a positive cash balance, we pay that interest to. So yes, the, the reserve would be able to get that money as well.
Perfect. Well, and I just want to point out that, you know, you mentioned that we are going to be adding some, some positions. I think you had a total of over 590 some thousand dollars, but it offsets by the amount of interest that we're gaining. The one thing I do want to point out is that when you're not earning interest in this inflationary environment, environment, I'm thinking that those dollars also devalue because the cost of doing work for future projects will increase because of inflation. So it's a good thing that it stabilizes that. So I'm glad that's happening. Now, the other question I have is regarding the NG, only because when you talk about utility, I noticed that the cost of utility cost was just within that one year it paused. But now we're up to $4 million. So the NG project that we did with respects to, and maybe Arnoldo, you may be to answer this, but are we seeing a bigger savings? I know that there was a cost of savings annually. But are we realizing that now even with the increased energy cost?
I'll take a stab at it and I may call Mike to kind to join me. So one of the challenges with the NG project is that it's not complete. A large part of it is complete, as in large, I mean, the city hall, the well center, the police department, public works. However, there are two large systems out at the wastewater treatment plant. They're two distinct systems. There was an existing one that the city installed. I'm going to say probably around 2013, if memory serves me. There are two brand new, very large scale facilities out there. The city has not benefited from those because they are not connected. So they're up. They look like they're active or as though they're turned on, but right now the city has not experienced any benefits. We are in constant communication with NG and PG&E. I, I am assured almost every other day that tomorrow is the day that they, that someone's going to flip the switch. I know we're very close and as soon as we do that, I believe that we're going to experience. I, I don't want to say enormous, you know, savings, but, but we are going to experience the savings. Those are the two largest facilities that we have. With that being said, one of the challenges that we're having is the price per kilowatt has increased significantly since, since a couple of years ago. When we did the NG project, one of the items was we were hedging our bets on, against the cost of energy per kilowatt. At the time, it was baked in at 6% if memory serves me. I'm going back to December of 2020. And so I think we are going to, we will experience some savings. But as of today, we have not experienced the full savings that we're anticipating. But again, as soon as those go live, I think that's going to, and that's going to be huge savings. A lot of that will be to the sewer fund because it's at the wastewater treatment plant. However, a second portion can be distributed to other funds and there's a formula for that dating back a couple of years.
So when you talk about facilities, you're talking about solar farms?
Yeah, solar farms.
Good. Just want to make sure we clarify. And that's when we'll realize some, some cost savings when it comes to the energy, right?
Exactly. So there are three distinct solar farms out at the wastewater treatment plant. Two of the three are not currently turned on, but we're, we're at the goal line.
Well, I mean, you do have elected officials on this dais. And if, if it requires a, a push of our local representatives from PG&E because we're, we're, we're spending a lot more in energy costs in our community, then we can advocate for that. So please let us know if there's something on our end that we can do. Because that, every day that that switch is not turned on, it's costing every resident a lot more money. And I don't think that's fair, that their holiness. And again, I know there's issues with power supply now, but you know, we have to do something here also to, to protect our residents. Last but not least, Mr. Lima, I do have a question in regards to, and this may be a concept that's familiar to you, maybe not, but I hear a lot because we're getting emails and my colleagues have probably gotten those emails, but priority based budgeting. Is that a concept that you've heard of?
Yes.
And, and if so, is that something that you believe that we can transition to? Or we have maybe a hybrid of it today. The reason why I say that is because priorities such as NG, for example, or, or projects that need to be done, we can allocate funds and move them based on the priority and not so much funding the departments based on traditional ways of budgeting. So I, I don't, I'd like to know maybe for my colleagues, is that something that we can transition to and would that benefit the city? And more importantly, I think it's, it'd be more transparent for our residents as well.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the concept. I've, I've never worked in an environment where it's been implemented. We tried it at one time and it, it didn't go well. And I, and I say that only because it was abandoned after about two years at the one place I worked. But I think it requires a commitment from council, from the whole council to, basically you need to have a workshop early in the process, say, here's the priorities. Here's what we want to see in the budget. And when you do that, then, then that filters through the organization and then we could start shaping after that. That was what was lacking at my previous workplace, but if, if I would be very open to sitting down with council and maybe work, workshopping it and seeing how we can do it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea for laying out. I guess I've always seen the budget as a contract, you know, you give us X amount of money, we'll do this. And I would think that if we could have that kind of sit down and, okay, here's what we want to deliver to the citizens of Madera. Now let's go see if we can find the money to do it. I would love to, I would be very open to that kind of workshop and, and developing that. Yeah.
Before we get into any of that, again, this is an idea that I brought, but maybe something we can discuss in the future. I didn't want to bring it here, but it would be something to consider if, if you think, and again, I'll leave this to our city manager. If, if you think that this would be beneficial to our community. Again, based on the priorities, you have start with this amount of money and you distribute based on those priorities for that specific year and, and move on and move on versus rolling over departments. You know, you let, you let the departments dictate what it is instead of our priorities or the community's priorities and what we serve, what we do. And then that way you put it in that, in that format that you're serving the community. That, again, not something that I want to get into discussion because we're talking budget. I figured maybe something we can talk about in the future.
Absolutely. I'm very open to that discussion.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for bringing this to us once again. Arnoldo, you've done a tremendous job making sure that we don't go back to the years of the budget deficits. We saw when we came in that we were under deficits and that is disheartening because it affects our community in many different ways. I believe it's been five, six years now?
Potentially five years.
Okay, about five years that we, we eliminated those deficits and now we're looking quite good in the, in the way we handle our budget. So I want to congratulate you and the staff. So I want to congratulate you and the staff for doing everything in that regard, just right off the get go. And then Commander, you want a new vehicle already? Haven't you started it? What the? No, I'm kidding you. I'm kidding you. We need to have levity, okay? We need to have humor. And that's my effort at, you know, getting this meeting in the right frame of mind so that we could make a laugh. But yeah, maybe in a couple of years, which get to that vehicle. And can you do anything about the chairs that we sit in on here on the dais? We, well, thank you. And I'm kidding, another another joke because you talked about technical upgrades here in the council chambers. And I'm really, I'm really surprised that their cameras and monitors are not that much. It seems to be a reasonable amount for that. But if I could make a push for chairs like like those right there, I appreciate that. And then I met with the council, I mean Congressman Duarte today. And we were talking about different things, including PG&E and the efforts we have for trying to make sure our infrastructure is in a more conducive to making the city work in the correct way. And we transitioned into talking about the river. Excuse me. And he asked me to ask Mr. Rodriguez, do you look into the possibilities of the Army Corps of Engineers helping out with our river and getting reimbursed? So that's, isn't it? So that would be something that we could look at also and move forward. There might be, I don't know whether he called it a grant or basically he said there's a possibility in the nation nationwide for reimbursements for that. And that's a significant amount of money that we spent before. And then we look at also for the next year that we will be doing the same thing. Man, I'll go back to the room. Councilwoman Gagis.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Lima, I just wanted to give you a shout out to your team on the budget and the magician, communication specialist Corrello for getting this. This budget was really easy to navigate through. But a shout out needs to go out to all the managers and supervisors that gave all those numbers. I know each department had to go and crunch numbers and and but back to instead sharpen the pencils like Arnoldo says, go back, see what you can change, see what we can do. So all those out there that took the time to get those numbers for you to put this together, a shout out to everyone and thank you for that. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. I did have one. No, really?
One last question for you. So in talking about the golf course, we pay that debt off in November, which is great. We do have an existing debt or a lease that we pay to the airport, correct?
Yes.
So just looking at some of the numbers there, we anticipate on possibly generating close to, I don't know, $100,000 after all said and done, right? One of the, one of the considerations, I visited with the golf course committee and looking at the allocation of $25,000 for the capital improvements of the depreciating assets that we have out there. I don't know if if maybe we have to pay a pay a visit out there to look at it, but I don't know that you're going to be able to sustain not necessarily the course, but it's it's capital improvements, its dwellings and what have you with that amount of money. So the fact that it's it's going to become somewhat self sustaining, meaning that it's going to pay for itself now that you have no bond. I would bring it, I would probably, this would probably come back through an advisory committee, but just allocating those funds in a way that you can maybe invest back into your, one of your biggest assets. And that's that's a park. Now you have a list of parks and there's not one that produces money. Because like anything else, it's a service that we provide for residents, again, priorities. But if this one specifically gives you an amount that can somehow balance out some of the deferred maintenance and or the 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 capital improvements that you can generate, then I would bring that back as a consideration that that you continue to invest in your asset and then hopefully make that a better course. Because now if, I mean, I'll let that come back as a committee issue there. But anyhow, just want to mention that because that is something that some that I think the city can be proud of now. I think when they first got this golf course in the 90s, it was a very popular thing to do. Then we found out that having us man it was pretty expensive. We then went to a subcontract. They're doing the job of taking care of maintaining it. But like any landlord, it's your, it's your home. And whenever something goes wrong, you're responsible for it, right? I mean, aside from what you have in your agreements, you're still, that's still your your asset that you have to take care of so that it can continue to generate the the value that it does. So just want to end with that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Evans? Oh, did you have a? No, okay. No, I'm good.
It was so pleasant to listen to you deliver the budget. And I know each and every one from each department has given you numbers and you crunched them and everything turned out very well. So that, thank you for that. I have a call in to the warden for the river cleanup. So if you're listening, Warden, I'm waiting for a call back because it would be nice to be able to use some of the inmates that are out there, you know, at the prison to come out and do some river cleanup and maybe even crunch some of our numbers even smaller because that would be bodies that we could use. So let's pray for that. And like I said, if he's listening, maybe I'll get a call back and then I can refer him to either you or to Arnoldo for that. But thank each and every one of you for all of your hard work. Again, quite pleasant because it was very, you know, it was quite maneuverable. And kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That means a lot to me. Thank you.
Without further ado, I'll ask for my colleagues for a motion on item B1.
I'll move to approve item B1.
Second.
Hey, we have multiple. Who's going to take it?
I'll stick in your notes.
Second by Councilwoman Evans. To approve item B1, a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. B1 is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time. We will now move on to adjournment of this meeting. The meeting, the time is now 6:55, I believe, a record for for a budget hearing in this city. I'm not sure of that for past years, but I want to thank everyone for being here and participating tonight. Our upcoming meeting dates are Wednesday, September 6th of this year and Wednesday, October the 4th of this year. Thank you very much and have a good evening.